Okay. It is October 29th, 2018. This is your Committee of Finance Budget and Audit. So, I want to welcome everybody to the meeting. Mr. Braden, welcome back from Florida.
Thank you, sir.
We're happy to have you. You missed a very eventful week last week.
So I hear.
I know that you would have loved to be here if you could have. Excellent. So, we do have Mr. Auditor Stith with us today. He's gonna give a just pretty comprehensive update of what's gonna happen at the city. Schedules have just been weird the last couple Finance Committee meetings, so we're happy to have you here. So, I guess without further ado.
Okay. Well, good evening. Couple things to update and a few things that we have kind of on an agenda to talk to you guys about is what's gonna be happening over the next two months here as we close out the year 2018. Our initial financial projections for the end of the year, as they have been since about the first quarter, shows that we do not project as much of a deficit as we had projected in the fiscal emergency plan, meaning that from a cash flow basis, what we've actually spent or expended and what we've actually received invoices for is a little bit less than what was projected. So what we have to do in the next couple of months here is, number one, we need to update 2018's appropriations. Now, the auditor of state has stated they do not want to change our plan. However, they have instructed us in several keys over this year to make payments where no appropriations had yet been made. This is something that I've strongly discouraged. However, they didn't want to change appropriations right away, so in some areas, we've written checks and created negative appropriations in some accounts, and we've only done this under the direction of the state auditors with the understanding that by the end of the year, all of these appropriations will be made correct. And the way we do this without exceeding the plan is we do an analysis key by key throughout the rest of the, and do projections for the rest of the year, and find those areas of appropriations that are a little overfunded based on our projected expenditures for this year. We should be able to decrease those and then increase the areas which were underfunded. One of the largest areas was the property taxes. As you know, there were back property taxes owed on some properties that the city had contested with the county that were city-owned properties and should not have taxes applied to them from the county. The previous law departments had protested this and written and filled out the documents. The current law department had gone and argued this in court, and basically, the county said, "Okay, we'll now make these properties tax exempt, but you have to pay all of the back taxes due on them." So this year, we had a list of all these properties with back taxes due on them. We paid them even though it exceeded the appropriations because we were instructed to by the auditor of state who spoke to the Fiscal Emergency Commission about it, but I can't end the year with those keys being negative. We were directed to do this. I would not have agreed to it unless I was told to do so, and we've got to correct it. There's some other small areas with similar type situations where adjustments need to be made. Similarly, there's outstanding purchase order requests for some departments for things they need that there's not enough appropriations for, but there should be enough room under the existing budget to decrease the areas of where appropriations were not fully expended so that we can increase these things and buy these things the city needs to operate. All of these adjustments were done two months ago and presented to council or presented to Finance Committee then as changes suggested to the appropriations. We met with the state and they said, "No, we don't want to do this now. We want to wait, close out October, rerun all your numbers at the end of October with your year-end projections, then we'll make all the changes." So we expect to see this on the second council meeting of November, an appropriation change ordinance to change appropriations for the remainder of 2018. So that should be upcoming. Hopefully, we can have another meeting to go through those things line by line. Obviously, all the spreadsheets we're putting together, we will send to you at the same time we send them to the state. Those will be done after closeout of 2018, so I'm expecting within, or 2018, of October of 2018. So I'm expecting those in the first two weeks of November. We should have those projections to you with some detailed explanations. Similarly, we've got to pass appropriations for 2019. Now, the fiscal emergency plan as it stands dictates what the initial appropriations are going to be for 2019. So I've put together a spreadsheet which I've emailed to the state for their approval, as well as to the head of Finance Committee, and he'll be forwarding this to you. And there's a printed copy here. Now, it's the second copy that I sent you. There was one update. If you look on page four out of seven, you'll notice there's a highlighted area that's bond retirement, and four lines above there, you'll see earnings tax income and earnings or earnings tax refunds, which is line 01, 2500, 7400. It's $1,951,600. Now, that is the total amount of earnings tax refunds plus the amount that we are going to be moving to Fund 89. So that number really in the appropriations is going to be $300,000, or maybe a little bit less. The $1,951,000 is actually the total amount of earnings tax refunds paid out of the earnings tax office plus the full amount of money that's segregated into Fund 89 throughout the year based on our projections. So Fund 89 is the refund key for four large businesses in the cities that can get or may get a portion of their earnings tax back if certain projections are met based upon contracts with the city. Now, the way that the state auditors put together the fiscal emergency plan, they mix that money for the refunds into the general fund revenue on their projections, and so on the fiscal emergency plan, that money's always included in there. So on the back end of their plan, they always have to include taking that money out. But from an actual accounting standpoint from the city, according to the contracts that were made with those companies, we have to segregate that money. It has to be split off prior to being deposited in the general fund. So when we do our books and our appropriations, we don't include that money. It actually goes into a separate fund in our accounting. It doesn't wash through the general fund, whereas the way the state wants it done, it washes through the general fund. Do you guys have any questions on that? That's just the biggest difference you're always going to see between the plan and the appropriations is always that. Why the plans' projections for earnings are always higher than our projections for earnings, and their projections for expenditures are always higher. It's because of this one key. But we try to follow what's been made with the agreements with the companies instead of that other way. Also, you'll notice that once we get past Fund III, there's really not appropriations in a lot of these keys. And this is because these are all the keys where we have funds that we are going to appropriate money into those funds based on either what the revenue is or what the revenue projections are. And so we're gonna be plugging those in after we close out October, and then just based on our cash position report, what the revenue and expenditures are, what our projected actual cash balance for each fund is going to be, and put in the amount of projected revenue. So all of those funds will be filled in based on what their cash balance is at the end of October. There has been some discussion as to whether or not we would fully appropriate those funds based on what their projections and their cash balance is, and that's something that you guys can decide and move around appropriately at that time. But a lot of those just based on how much money there's going to be projected at the end of the year, if there's regular revenue, monthly revenue into a fund like permissive tax, right? We will appropriate what we project the full year to be. Funds that get money on a very irregular basis such as the federally forfeited property fund, we will just appropriate the balance at a given time, and then as revenue comes in, or as we're told that revenue will be expected, we can increase appropriations accordingly because that will be dependent on what the Certificate of Estimated Resources published in July actually allows us. So that's 2018. Any questions on where we are on that?
Yep. Not to me.
And again, the copy of that spreadsheet can be forwarded to you. Oh, that's 2019, I'm sorry. In talking to the state in a meeting that we had about six weeks ago, the plan was to put, to try to really project what our year-end point is going to be at the close of October. So one of the things that we are initiating on October 31st, a letter will be going out tomorrow that no new POs will be accepted in the office with rare exception. So, purchase orders for routine purchases at this time stop October 31st. Then typically what would happen in previous years is you'd get down to December and we'd start saying, "Okay, we're gonna close out purchase orders December 31st," or before that point, and there would be this big influx of requests. So what the state said is, instead of doing that, move it back to really November 1st closeout, because if you need something for the rest of the year, it really should be considered urgent or emergent, in which case can be approved on an individual basis. But routine approval of purchase orders at this point is gonna stop later this week. What that'll do is really give us an idea of what our expenditures will be for the rest of the year. There's obviously POs we're gonna be processing. We get C-9 trust requests, those are gonna go through. You know, we get requests for things that have, you know, were committed to such as lease payments, et cetera, that those go through. It's just the routine purchase order filing that comes through, especially the blankets, you know, miscellaneous office supplies, miscellaneous repairs, those stop in the next day.
Question about that.
Yes.
So are we gonna be notifying, when will department have to be notified?
Tomorrow.
They'll be notified tomorrow. So they'll have a chance to get anything that they feel like they need to get done?
I think that anything that needs to be done is still going to be done, right? So if they come and they go, "Wow, we're out of toner. We really need toner for our printer," that's gonna be approved. What we don't want to do is go, "Oh, I better use up everything I can this year. So let's put out a miscellaneous purchase order for the total amount." That's the behavior that we're trying to change and curtail. Somebody needs something, they need something, they're gonna get what they need. If they want something, that's a little bit different. But we're gonna still fulfill the needs of the city, you know, to the best of our ability at this point. So that letter goes out tomorrow. The other thing we've got to talk about here is the water fund. It's been an issue that the water fund since about November of last year for one year has had a negative balance and has continued to dwindle down. The current negative balance, if we pay all outstanding encumbrances, is $529,000. Negative, half a million dollars. So we started, we've been looking into this, but we really started focusing on it more lately and doing an analysis. We've asked the state to assist us in looking into this. I've got some data here. Question is, why is it when we're collecting money from our citizens and paying it out to Cincinnati plus some expenses that we have on our side, why are we negative? Why can't we connect enough in that fund? I've included the billing rates. It shows that there was a 5% increase in the water fund and water rates on 1-1-2018. The page that has large number of numbers across the top is monthly analysis of revenue and not full expenditures, but just the water bill alone, the total revenue for the water fund and the actual water bill, what were charged by Cincinnati on a monthly basis for 2014, 15, 16, 17, and 18. Below that are year-to-year comparisons showing increases or decreases in the revenue and in the water bill amount that were charged by the city of Cincinnati year-to-date, running in a cycle of January through September of each year. So we took this year, January through the end of September, because we're not done with October yet in our collections, and we said, "Okay, if we look back to 2014, January through September, how much was our water bill total that year?" Similarly, January through September of 2014, how much was our revenue? And then what increase or decrease to the percentages, which is that far-right column? And if you look, what we see is just from 2016, from 2015 to 16, a 1.6% increase in our water bill owed to Cincinnati. 16 to 17, a 1.18% increase, and 17 to 18, a 4.06% increase in the water bills for that first part of each year, the first roughly three quarters of the year. When we look at our revenue from January to September of 2015, it's a 0.01% increase. 2016, a 1% increase. 2017, a 0.37% increase, and 2018, a 0.36% increase. So the actual money that we're getting in has gone up 0.36% for this, for year-to-date this year compared to year-to-date last year, where our expenses have gone up 4.06%. That's why we're half a million dollars in the hole. Now, there are some other things that go into this, but that's the major problem here. And some of it has to do if we look at our three-month billing cycle and we're not collecting revenue on a regular basis, or when our rates go up, they tend to lag months behind when our billing rates goes up and when it's passed on to the citizens because we're always billing three months in arrears. Other reasons for this is the changing of the Cincinnati Water Works billing cycle. They went to an outside source to handle their billing and where we used to have a little bit of a delay before we were actually billed, just like our citizens do, they want it now. And so we're now in a 28-day billing cycle, where it used to be a monthly billing cycle and where we used to be able to pay about a month in arrears. Now it's like, "No, you owe us now," and it's every 28 days. So every 28 days obviously means there's 13 payments in a year instead of 12. So that extra payment makes you go behind. Now, from their standpoint, it's good because they're getting this money in and this revenue in, but from our standpoint, it's made us go negative. So we have asked the state a couple of times to keep an eye and to look on this, to look at this. They are looking over our history and our projections for the fund, how exactly it's managed within the department itself, how the bills are split and divvied up and everything else, because we do have an issue where we've got a water fund that's negative and we've got a sewer fund that's got a positive balance. From our standpoint, we looked at this and said, "Well, is the money all going to the right place?" And everything that we're looking, what we look at from our end says, "Yeah, from an accounting standpoint, it's gone that way." We need to do a little bit more in-depth investigation into how it's handled within the software from that department standpoint. But what we've looked at so far says that that is correct. There's some, there's been some suggestion that within the sewer fund, there is a management fee that is included in there that may be able to be used to offset some of the expenses of personnel and billing and computer services and everything else, and that's something that we are looking into and investigating what legally we can use that sewer money for. Can it be used for projects in the city? Can it be related specifically to sewage? These are things that we're looking into because basically, we have one fund that doesn't have enough money and another fund that has too much.
So, yeah, that brings up a great point. In the billing software, we've talked about the sewer fund numerous times this year. I mean, it's been a concern of both of ours that it's as positive as it is right now. So in the software, does the auditor's office, do they give you any kind of printout that shows that confirms that the numbers that are being deposited in any one of these accounts, like at the treasurer's office, are actually supposed to be in that account like that? It's coming from the actual billing software, that this is how much was collected for sewer and the water?
Well, these aren't accounts, these are funds.
Or funds, excuse me.
So, right, because it's all mixed into one big or a couple of big accounts. So it's not the treasurer's office that's involved in that. It is how the billing software in the water department as it comes in and is processed, how it's then reported to us through the software. So from that end, is that being done correctly? That's what we're looking into, or that's what the state's gonna be looking into.
Gotcha. I just want to make sure there's some kind of printout that's being based, or something from the software that's basing where these funds are going and not just somebody at the water department filling out a sheet or something and transposing a number and causing issues.
No, I'm pretty sure it's pretty automated that you would be able to go in and identify from each bill how much goes into, because the water, the water bill actually has several funds in it. It has the water fund itself, the sewer fund, and it has the refuse, which is your runkey fund. And so those pull off, you know, that's, that's the next step is to look there. We looked at it from the standpoint of, did we believe that money was being put in one direction when it should have gone to another? But everything we've looked at does not indicate that, although we still need to look further.
Gotcha. You've talked about increases in the water billing. So you'd mentioned how from 2015 to 2016, there was a 1.6% increase. You said from 16 to 17, there's a 1.18% increase, and then a 4% increase from 17 to 18. Now, these billings, these are not how much people are being billed like per cubic foot or per 100 cubic feet. This is how much is being billed for the actual usage. So essentially, if we have a 1% increase in billing, but we actually had a, you know, let's just say a 4% increase in the water rate, essentially, we're just using slightly less water. I mean, if it's only gonna be a 1% total increase.
Right. This is the total amount of bills paid to the city of Cincinnati. So you'd have to actually look at each bill and see how much, or we could actually look online from a billing standpoint and see what the amounts were. But this is actually cash, what we were charged by the city of Cincinnati. And you'll, you'll see, there's a little difference, let's say, in 2015. There was a slight decrease, but then there was a slight increase in 2016. That could be just the way the billing cycle falls. You know, did you get your bill? Was it due on December 27th, or is it due on January 1st? So you'll see a shift like that. Well, now with this 28-day cycle, you know, this is concerning. You've got to consider that about every 28 days, we're getting a $300,000 bill for the city of Cincinnati Water Works. One was due, or was just paid, it's due on October 31st. So if we're doing 28 days, that tells me there's three more bills due this year because it's a 28-day cycle. So that's $900,000 due this year. And we're negative 500 now. Now, our revenue on a monthly basis, if you look here, it is about 300, could be 350,000. Let's say it's 350,000. Well, this month was so far only 301, but it should be around 350,000 a month. So that means we've got about 700,000 more coming in. We know we're gonna be hit with about $900,000 more in bills, and we're already negative You know, that, that's a big difference. We're gonna be negative at the end of this year.
But you said we have, we have a positive balance in our sewer.
That's correct.
Which fund is that? Where's that at?
That is Fund 61.
61, thank you.
So right now, in the sewer fund, there is roughly just over 2.5 million dollars. We have a bill that's due that's just over 500,000, and there's 3.1 million in there now, so.
And you can't just take that and use it for the water because the state of Ohio says you can't do that?
Yeah, the federal, yeah. It's a restricted fund, just like all of these funds are restricted. And this goes back, this harkens back to this whole idea of during fiscal emergency allowing the general fund to go negative and how resistant I was and still am to that because when we let a fund go negative, we're basically using the money for another fund. The fact that the water fund is negative, but all the money is in one bank account, if you've got the sewer fund way up here and the water fund way down here, you know, they'll sort of level out. That's not the way you should be doing things. Now, because we're in fiscal emergency, we're being told to do it that way by the state, but we need to start doing things correctly, which unfortunately, we were led into fiscal emergency from the standpoint that we were trying to do things correctly and we were not taking money from those other funds. But that made us make late payments on things. But I think at the end of this year overall, we're gonna be in a better position than what we projected a year ago and what was projected by the state in March. And I think that when we adapt the new fiscal emergency plan this coming March, or probably March or April, there'll be a new one, that the numbers will look a little bit better. And that we'll start to see a light at the end of the tunnel, hopefully. So what do we do about all this now? Well, the problem is because our expenses have gone up in the water fund by 4.06%, we have run out of appropriations to pay the water bill. So we now have a negative, we've over-expended appropriations by $223,000 because we had to pay the October 31st water bill. Now, normally in my office, if there's a bill that comes in that we have to pay, that it's gonna give us a huge amount of fines and late fees, we need to pay it now, we would issue a then-and-now certificate, which basically says, "We believe we're gonna go ahead and issue a PO allowing the appropriations to go negative, and either Marcus Patterson, the deputy auditor, or myself has the legal authority to issue a PO for a bill to be paid without appropriations with the belief that council will change the appropriations to cover that bill in the future." However, the limit for us to do that is $3,000. This is a little more than that. So we have to come to council, and we have to ask in the form of either an ordinance or resolution, I believe it's an ordinance, that says, "Council authorizes the city auditor to perform a then-and-now certificate for the water fund for up to X amount of dollars." And what that's saying is, "You know there's a problem, we're investigating it, we're trying to fix it, we're gonna change appropriations to be able to match this, but for now, we need to pay the bill." Now, what if we let the water bill go and we say, "You know, let's wait till the first meeting of November to make this decision." Okay, late fee, six grand. $6,000 is the average late fee when we look at it. I mean, this is not a, "Let's wait and see." It's, you know, I hate to make water puns, flushing money down the drain, trickling down all those, I was trying to avoid it. So what I would like to do is, is ask Finance Committee to approve a then-and-now ordinance to be brought to council that basically is gonna say, "City Council authorizes the city auditor to issue a then-and-now certificate for payment of the water bill for up to," and what I would say is $550,000, because that'll cover the current bill and the next bill, and that'll allow us into December to be able to, probably close to the end of December, to be able to make the corrections to make this appropriate. Any questions on that?
So basically, what you're saying here is, October bill you've paid.
Yes.
And you're projecting, your projection is that $700,000 roughly for the next two months is, is what we're projected to?
I think it's gonna be closer to 900,000.
900.
Yeah, because they're about $300,000 each, and if they're doing 28-day cycles and we paid October, right, that means, well, if we pay the October bill, then we got the 28, so there'll be, there'll be two, let's say there's two more, 600.
Okay.
Because, see, I'm afraid we're just gonna get really close to the end of the year, but...
So what?
Well, I think, I think there's gonna be two more, because it'll be, if we pay on the 31st, there's gonna be one due on November 27th. 31st, there's going to be one due on November 27th. And if we pay on November 27th, there's going to be one due on December 25th.
So I got two questions.
So two, so that's 600,000.
Two questions. I'd like to know what our chair thinks about this. I'd like to hear from Mr. Bonzel about exactly what he thinks about this. And so what's going to be different next year? What are we going to do next year different to keep us from, or is we're going to be in this again, or is this...
Well, like I said, we've asked the state auditor to look into, you know, the accounting system within the water department and see if it's all being done correctly, which so far, I think it is.
It is, yeah.
But we want to make sure there's no problems there.
Sure.
And the next thing is, looking into what we can do within the sewer fund and the surplus that's there, and is there a management fee that's part of that that can be used to offset some of the personnel and computer equipment expenses within the water fund and backdate that to the beginning of the year? Because if we can use some of that money for some of the expenditures from a software, a mailing standpoint, a personnel standpoint, let's utilize that money that's sitting there. And then look at where our balance is, and then project out our revenues on a monthly basis moving forward, and see if there needs to be a change in the billing. Because just from stepping back and looking at this, it seems to me that we need to increase the billing in the water fund and decrease the billing in the sewer fund. If the sewer fund's positive, are we charging too much? And if we're charging too much, let's decrease that and increase what we charge for the water fund, and it makes no, a net zero change to the citizens, their bill doesn't go up. I don't know if that's practical or not. I don't know what the legality of that is or not. These are the things that we're looking into, and these are the things we're asking the state about. But that seems to be sort of the obvious thing to do. If it appears that you're over collecting for one and under collecting for another, let's adjust those. And what is the process for that? That's kind of where we are now, that we've, you know, identified where the issues are. Ideally, I would love to do all of this with a net zero change to the citizens, because I pay my bills. I know the water and the sewer bill and the trash bill, that's a big bill to pay every three months, and I don't want to see it go up. But we also can't have negative funds. Now, hopefully, we could do all this without making it go up.
So Jim, just kind of looking at these numbers here, because I want to make sure that we're calculating them correctly. So if you look at, you know, I guess that's the second column here, where you actually have the totals, so 2850, 685, you subtract that from 2374, 018...
Where are you at, Mr. Bonzel?
I'm at the, where we talk about the actual billing, where it says water bill.
Okay.
So I'm thinking that the percentages might be slightly off here, so I just want to make sure.
Which percentage are you looking at? Because this was put together by Marcus. This is not the percentage.
Right. But I think he's basing it on that column, he's basing it on this column, because 24.28 minus 20.22 equals 4.06.
Yeah, it should be...
It should be based on the other columns.
Well, what it should be is, it should be 2850, 685, 84 minus 2374, 018, and then that amount...
Divided by 2374.
Divided by 2374, 018, 39. That should be the formula.
Yeah, so that would equal, then, that would mean that we have a 20% increase over last year, which comes to...
Nah.
Yeah, well, allegedly there are.
Minus 100, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds about right. Just roughly, I mean, I don't have the spreadsheet to be able to run it if I had Excel.
You're fine. Yeah, it's after in Excel, so advantage there. But I mean, so, I mean, that's fine, but just, we've got to realize that, I think there's a, to me, I think there's a bigger problem in it than just the billing cycle.
Well, it's the billing cycle and the increase. The price of water went up, and this is part of the issue too. When there, so the billing cycle's one, let's say we get one extra bill, right? One extra bill that we have to pay this year, that's 300,000. That's 300 of the 476 that's there. So that leaves 176 that it went up. Then, because that's the extra bill, to get caught up, now we have 176,000. Where's that come from? Well, that comes some from usage, but a lot from the fact that the rate goes up. Now, the problem with what we have is we have a system where, you know, being a statutory city, the state, or the city of Cincinnati raises their water rates, and they send out a bill, and they say, "January 1st, the water rate's going up." And then that's sent to the city of Norwood, and then the safety service director says, "Well, we better raise the rates," and he sends a letter to council, and a few weeks later, council gets that letter that says, "Okay, we understand the rates are going to raise." And then, once that happens, it goes to the water department, who then adjusts the billing there, but the billing runs three months in arrears. So at what point, if we're told right away, the city of Cincinnati's is going up, and then we start collecting further down the road how much it's gone up, how much increase have we paid without passing that on? And some of the things that come up to mind is, is there a way that we could have an automatic thing built into our legislation that says, "Whenever Cincinnati raises its water rates, we reflexively do the same thing," on the date that it goes up? And I know we bill three months in arrears, and, you know, the whole way the billing works and the water being read and everything else, I mean, it just means that we collect the money slower. And I'm not sure from the billing cycle at what point the bills go up. If you're collecting in arrears and the prices change June 1st, when you get your June 1st bill, is it higher on that bill because you're paying three months in arrears? Or do you wait, do you get your bill for June's usage that it goes up?
Yeah, it's, I mean, we're still at the point though, so let's just say you have an extra bill. An extra bill, you divide 13 by 1, or 1 by 13, excuse me, that's 7.7%. Let's say that we don't collect the extra increase for the first three months, we're still, let's just say that's 2% that we lost out on those first three months. So, I mean, that's still like 10%. So, and maybe we have some water main breaks or something that, like, more water main breaks than normal in January. It was a really cold year, maybe that was it, but I guess the thing is, I just want to make sure, I agree with Mr. Brayden, that I think that we do need to make sure that we are doing everything we can to keep this in check, because here's the thing, we don't have, I mean, we have the safety service director that's the head of that department, but when you're talking about, you know, we're $500,000 short if you count the encumbrances, and a year ago, it was, I guess a year ago's when it started, but a year ago, we were at least balanced. I mean, you know, do we need to hire somebody that just literally looks at, that works in the fire, that works in the water department and keeps track of this stuff? I mean, I guess I'm just trying to understand, what do we need to do as a council to make sure that we are ensuring that the citizens' utility billing, utility bills are, we're being efficient as possible with that utility funds? Like, that's...
Didn't we just raise, the water bill, the water bill just came to council, like, I don't know what month that was, but...
Yep.
The beginning of the year.
Yeah, so, and it was raised 5%. The safety service director raised it.
So with that lag in that three months, you know, as they're charging us, and we're not, we're not, I understand.
Yeah, I mean, I still don't think though that's, yeah, I, it's hard, because the city of Cincinnati, instead of being on a monthly billing cycle like they used to be, with this every 28-day thing, we've got some months that have double bills, some months that don't have a bill on it, just the way that the thing falls. And it's very hard from our standpoint, from the accounting standpoint, to see it work, because it's so irregular now compared to what it used to be, and it doesn't fall in those, like, so those monthly cycles.
Yeah, at the end of last year, the end of 2017, there was a balance of $87,182 in the water fund. And then, when we look at January, we dispersed $701,726, because there were two bills. That's that catch-up. So we ended negative $332,000 just in January, before all of this...
2017.
2018.
2018.
Yeah, so at the end of 2017, we had $87,000 in it, and then we brought in $336,000 in January in billing, which is pretty average, between 320 and 350, let's say. But we were billed 701,000. Because they started the new billing cycle, and I think they switched to the new billing company in November of, we'd have to check, but I believe it was November is when they switched to 2017. But, so you carry a positive balance through to January, but you're hit with two water bills to the tune of over $700,000. You know, that's a big expense. And then, they bill every 28 days, so you might get one January 1st, and then January 28th, and then you get a February, and, you know, that's where you start to see a lot of the, you know, expenditures jump up and down. Actually, in February, because of the way it fell, there was no, there was no bill, but then in March, there was a bill, just from a cash standpoint. But it's been, it's been a catch-up game, because then you're paying 555,000 in April.
Yeah, it's interesting, so, you know, when they have water, what's interesting about these, I think that part of it probably is water main breaks, part of it probably is the billing cycle, and part of it's probably that the rates being raised are delayed. But what's interesting about it, like, for the city of Cincinnati standpoint, is that when they're providing water service to their citizens, and there's a water main break, it's not costing the city of Cincinnati anything. Like, for them to, when that water's spewing out, I mean, the cost of them to provide that gallon of water into the system, they're not getting billed for that, because it's just, it's an expense that's already being used. Like, the expense of pulling the water out of the river is already there, so getting pushed into the system, it doesn't cost anything more. But since our meters are at the, you know, fringes of the city, I think there's six different points out of the city that we, water is coming in, when we have water main breaks, there are, all that water's spewing out, we're still getting billed for because it's after the meter. So the meter is at the fringe of the city, anything that happens underneath our city, we're getting billed for. And so, it's kind of, you know, like, I'd love to see if we have, if those meters are like smart meters, and if they measure the water usage by the day, because I'd be curious to see if we can get a printout of that, if that could be part of it, because I mean, it was an extremely cold winter, and we had a lot of water main breaks this year, so...
So...
I'd imagine if they were smart meters, that's something that we can access from their website, from their billing site. I'm not sure if they are or not.
Yeah, and I can't, I mean, I just know that, you know, with our Duke Electric, I think gas tube, but definitely with electric, you can see your usage by the day. That's why I was... But, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Brayden.
No, so, I mean, looking at it, the smart thing to do would be to use the water sewer money to pay the water bill, but they're saying they're not allowed to do that. And so what you're asking is for resolution for you to, okay, to pay this because there's no money in this fund?
Correct.
And that's coming out of the general fund? Or where's that going to come from?
It's, basically, it'll allow the water fund to be negative to pay its bills in the same way that we were allowing the general fund to be negative to pay its bills.
Okay, okay.
And only for a fixed period of time.
Sure.
So, as we, as it starts to correct itself.
It will correct itself.
As I said, there's hopefully some corrections that we can do from an accounting standpoint.
Sure.
Some changes that we can legally do. We've got to see if we can or not.
And those will unfold as we pay it, and we, hopefully, hopefully. Sure.
The biggest thing is, understanding that this has been a problem, and this is a problem. Now, this is included, this information is included in the packet of financial data that goes out to all elected official department heads, posted online every month. So what I would say is, I highly encourage all council members to be looking at Fund 50 every month. And if you just look on the cash position report, the two-page report, bottom of the first page, it'll show you revenues and expenses, year-to-date, month-to-date, and what the balance is at the end. And then if you get more curious, you can go to the revenue report, go down to 50, and see the breakdown of where that money's coming in. If you want it done, like, you know, you want to see how the revenues come in over time, we maintain in our office a spreadsheet that basically takes all the columns on the, on the cash position report, and just does them each month just next to each other, so you can sort of look at the whole year as one.
Okay.
And Marcus has those, if you ask him for those.
I want to know how we fix this without raising the water bill.
So do I.
Yeah.
That's what I need to, that's what we need to know.
Yeah, I think that it's going to take, I mean, we definitely will need to get, I think we'll need to ask the safety service director to come and attend a future finance committee meeting and talk to us about what's, you know, what's kind of happening there. I've, I mean, I've asked him about it multiple times throughout the year, I've asked the financial supervisors about it, we've talked about it, I've talked to Jim about it countless times, you know, with the water rates, and there's all these different, like, reasons, but I agree with Mr. Brayden that we've got to probably drill this down and figure out what's going on, and make sure that it's not something that's...
And I think it's, just on the surface of it, and just looking at what we're looking at here, I mean, ideally, this should be something we can fix without overall raising rates.
Good.
I mean, if you've got too much in one and not enough in the other, decrease one, raise the other, and it's a net zero effect for the citizens, because I don't want to see the bill go up. But the other thing that people do need to understand is, whenever you see, you know, a water main break, water main, water pouring down the street, or a fire hydrant break and water pouring down the street, that every citizen is paying for part of that water that's rolling down there.
Right, yeah.
Because that just means that comes out of the bill we have to pay the city, that Cincinnati's Water Works, and everybody pays that, so...
Sure, the same way your toilet is running, it's costing you money.
Correct.
Absolutely, understood, yeah. So, I would have no problem supporting that, if that's what you need.
Jim, do you think there's any opportunity to, I mean, have, I mean, the city of Cincinnati does some water, like, controls the water system for some of the townships in other places that are not the city of Cincinnati?
Yeah, I really, I don't know anything about that.
Okay. Because I don't know if you remember, I mean, there was that big brouhaha about the city of Cincinnati raising water rates higher on the township residents than they did on the city residents. And so, I guess I'd just be curious, I think, if there could be an opportunity to have them come in and look at potentially contracting with them to manage the water system instead of the city of Norwood manage it, especially if we can get rid of these meters then that we're paying for. And when we have a water main break, it's not literally coming out of our citizens' pockets versus...
What I've heard about that is that our pipes are so old that need upgrading, that it was just, it's, we, there's a lot underground that needs done to bring us up to date. So what I've heard is, is the expense to replace them, that's what they don't want to take control over.
Yeah, and it...
I mean, that's from my understanding.
Yeah, and there's been a lot, I mean, I've heard rumors on this specific thing a lot. I mean, even the safety service director's told me, oh, they've talked about, they've never wanted, you know, I don't want to, I want to see something more like concrete, like, I'd love to make an overture to them and find, or ask the safety service director to do that and find out what it might take, because, I mean, there's things, like, especially the billing stuff, like, they've got a great online... like, especially the billing stuff, like, they've got a great online billing platform where you can set it on auto pay and set it and forget it, not have to worry about it. And there's other things that you can do, too, that we don't, you know, offer necessarily our citizens. I was talking to a resident that lives off Elsmere a couple weeks ago. She was talking, we were talking both about how we each, we get late fees all the time because, I mean, you have so little time to pay that bill, it seems like. And, you know, there's not an auto pay feature right now on the, on Norwood's site. So we end up both paying, we were, made each other feel better, because we ended up both paying late fees quite often when it comes to the water bill.
Cool, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Yes. And I did tell her that it does contribute to, you're helping the city out, but I don't know if that makes you feel much better.
I believe if I look back to when I was first elected and started looking into it, I had paid for eight years, or I had paid for six years, double payments on the garbage, on refuges collection, because they thought I was a two-family.
Yeah, that's...
So read your, read your bills, everyone, and make sure that you're, that it's good. Kind of going along those same lines.
Before we leave this, okay, so we just, for the then and now, I mean, we have to pay the water bill. Like, there's really no, we can't just tell the city of Cincinnati, hey, you know, we didn't get enough revenue, and I'm sorry, we're not going to pay our water bill. I mean, we've got to pay it. So you asked me what my thought was on it. I mean, my thought is that I think the council should approve the then and now. And I do think that the finance committee should recommend that it gets approved. We've got to figure out what's going on with it, but it's, we've got to pay the, we've got to pay the bill.
I, I think that you're correct. We recommend to, to go along with the resolution as well as the overlook of exactly what's wrong and what we can do to fix it in the coming months.
Just as we look ahead a little bit, I don't think that this, I'm not sure if this is practical for the last half of 2019, but it's definitely something we need to look at for 2020, is to be thinking about upgrading the financial software that the city uses. We're using products that are almost twenty years old. And just like we were talking about the financial reports, and I said, hey, all you got to do is look here, and you'll see it, many, many people have difficulty reading the financial reports because they're not familiar with that context. So that applies to department heads, that applies to citizens and council members, to anybody that looks at this that does not do this on a regular basis. The Fiscal Emergency Commission and the state auditors have said that this is something that we should look into as a city, upgrading our financial software. And so we did have some preliminary meetings and discussions with SSI, our current provider, as to what the options are. And as we found out, and we suspected, we're using a very, very, very old system. They compared it to programming in FORTRAN. That's for older people that know computers, because that's a very old language that's not used anymore. Basically, our financial data is in a large database, and it's stored there and updated on a monthly basis, closed out every month, kind of frozen in time, and then at the end of the year, closed out and frozen in time. Everything that we do, all of the reports that we run, any data that we get from it, is a query within that database. And the software that we're using to manage that right now is the interface that people can use to query information from that database. And SSI has a modern, much better interface available. We pay yearly service fees to them to maintain this and to troubleshoot it for us, but we're paying a service fee for a product that's very old. If we purchase a new product, and there's different modules depending, there's, there's a, you know, a financial management, which is basically the auditor's section, there's payroll section, there's a utility billing section, there is a purchase order processing section, these are all things that are being recommended that we do. And what this would do is change the system that we have here, where a person who works in a department taking a piece of paper that Xerox and going, I, I need to buy this from this fund, and sending it to their boss, who signs the paper, who sends it to our office, who says, yes, there's appropriations, who sends it to Joe Gears to sign, who signs it, comes back down to us. We then use that to print out duplicate copies of paper that are the official copy of the purchase order, that go back up, and we sign it, goes back up, Mr. Gears signs it, comes back down, and then that person can go and buy the item. And then somebody else from that department gets online and goes, yeah, I, I need to buy something else. And then it goes through the same process, and it gets dusted, and go, oh, wait, oh, there's no money left, because that other guy bought this other thing. And that's a lot of paper, and a lot of handling, and a lot of confusion for a lot of people trying to understand, what is their budget, what's left, how much money is available, what can they buy, what has been bought. And now imagine this being a system where the individual sits down at the computer, logs on, sees a web-based type interface, and they see, they put in the key for the department that they're in, and they see how much it was budgeted, how much is left, and what open purchase orders there are. Oh, wait, somebody already ordered toner, I don't have to do that. Right? Or, oh, there's not enough money to buy this thing I need, but wait, there's a PO there that I'm not going to use anymore. So I'm going to close that one, and I'm going to bake this new one. And then electronically, it goes to us. All right, it doesn't even come to us to approve at that point, because it just tells you whether or not you can do it. It won't let you do it if there's not enough. And it eliminates having these long lists saying there's no appropriations left. You'll still get requests, but that's won't be managed from our standpoint. Electronically goes to the supervisor, the city manager who signs it. Electronically comes to us, and then we prove it and print it out. And then at any time, a department head can get on and see what their budget is. There's budgetary tools that'll help them look historically at how much has been spent, and not just having us generate reports to produce to them, or spend hours in our office producing spreadsheets to provide to you to make it easier to read this. All done online. Now, we still have to have duplicate printed copies and receipts and everything else, because that's the law. But that electronic use of purchase order approval, of creating budgets, having budgetary tools there for the departments to do, and not just creating their own, some using Excel, some using Word, and then emailing them all to finance committee and try to make sense of what everybody's got. But everyone using the same system. And this is the direction I believe our city needs to move into, because it does make it, everybody a little more financially accountable for the money they have and the money they're spending, and also making it a lot more ease of use for individuals who maybe sat in a class with eGov ten years ago and don't remember how to put in the purchase order request. Because we do need to move to that. We do need to move to the electronic version of that. And the recommendation is doing the upgrade. For all, I believe we have nine modules that we have in the city now, to upgrade everything and include training and include support, and them coming down and training all of the department heads and everybody who is going to be utilizing this system, one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, paid about fifty-thousand a year for three years. The current expense that we pay for support, which is just under thirty-thousand dollars a year, that won't change, that'll be the same. Something to think about. Now, from my standpoint, is it going to make my job easier? Yeah, I think so, because frankly, it'll make everybody work from a budgetary standpoint much closer to the numbers. It'll make a lot of things easier to understand. It'll engage more members of the city and more people from the administration, and hopefully more members of the public. Is this something that needs to be built into the fiscal emergency plan? Not these numbers, but the state auditor said that that's one of the things that we need to do, is upgrade the financial software that we use. Now, there's been some discussion about go and talk to other companies that could come in. SSI is the one we've used for years. It would be pretty seamless to upgrade, because essentially, they've managed the database, putting a new interface on their database as something that's already built. To come and have an outside company try to create a new interface for the existing database, because remember, we have to be able to see everything we've done in the past. We have to maintain all of those records. To be able to do that is much more difficult. So the recommendation is to stay with SSI. But this is just food for thought. This isn't going to happen two months from now, three months from now. But I think that these discussions will be happening around the time that we're planning for the next change in the fiscal emergency plan, because I believe this is something that should be built in and be beneficial to the city. And the fifty-thousand dollars is not something that's billed to my office. It goes across all the departments that utilize it in the city.
Okay.
Just like the SSI eGov software we use now goes to, it's broken up between departments.
Do you know approximately how much we currently pay for the support?
It's about thirty thousand here.
Okay, thirty.
I, I've got a letter downstairs that I could get that shows what it is next year. And that's split between, mostly it's between the water department and the general fund, because the water department's utility billing service is part of that.
Thank you. So, Jim, yeah, I think that, I mean, talking to April and Mary, too, I mean, it's the financial supervisors, I think it's critical that we get the financial software updated. And I, I'll be recommending it when we work on the financial recovery plan as soon as April and Mary let us update it, which we all know, well, you all know that it's a soft subject, or it's a subject of mine that's a little bit sore, because I'd like us to update it before the end of the year. But it's their position that they don't want it updated until March. So it is what it is, I guess, at this point. But, so, yeah, I think it's a great thing. I'm glad that you all worked on it. And Marcus has been pretty involved in that topic as well. Are you, are you getting the cooperation from all the department heads that you need, like, and all the input that you all need to make sure that the planning is happening appropriately? Like, in the sense of, like, from the utility department, you know, from the water department, from the treasures office? Is everybody involved and engaged to make sure that?
From this standpoint, on this subject?
From the financial, yeah, the financial software subject.
We're still early in the process. Where we've met and we've talked to the, the company, the next step is they want to come down and have a meeting where they make a presentation to basically anybody in the city that wants to come, and bringing all the department heads or all of the people from council in to make their presentation. Their plan was to try to do it the first week of November, but I believe they were really pushing for a January one start date. And when we last spoke to them and explained that it has to be approved by the Fiscal Emergency Commission, and the earliest that that's going to happen is going to be like March of next year, probably April. And so the discussions shifted from that kind of rushed standpoint to bring everybody in to make a decision, to know that we've got, at least through the first quarter of next year, to come down and have them make the presentations, and have everyone decide, is this a direction to go? Is it a good investment for the city or not? So we've got time to do that. The question that was posed to them was, at the last discussion, was, is this something that can be started mid-year? Can we switch this over and begin using this new software in June if we wanted, or July? Is this something that would be appropriate, that if it was planned, put into the fiscal emergency plan, can we do it July first, and then, or do we have to wait and do it after we close a year out and do it at the beginning of a year? We haven't heard back from them on that. I assume it's plausible we do that, because we're essentially just changing the interface to the database, but that's going to be up to their software people.
Yeah, it seemed, I mean, I was in one of the meetings with them when they just initially met with Marcus, and it seemed that they said there will be a, a one-to-two-week period where you can't use the software at all, because they're going to be, during that time, they're going to be exporting everything from the old software and putting in the new one. But it didn't seem to me, like, based on the way they were talking, that there was any year restrictions. And I think that's probably your presumption as well.
Right.
So, but I'm glad we're double-checking. So hopefully that'll be, yeah, that it will work out. I'll already be ready to do it middle of next year.
I just didn't want to wait and have the Fiscal Emergency Commission say, yes, go ahead and do this, and then walk into council with an ordinance and go, yeah, you got to pass this tonight. Trying to, trying to get away from things like that. Our goal with the preparation of the appropriations ordinance for 2019 is to be able to have three readings of it, and have it available the second meeting of November, and then have two more readings in December. And that way, there's plenty of time that everyone can look at it. The changes to 2018, similarly, I mean, once it's approved by the state and it's brought to council, if, I wouldn't like it to go to the end of the year and have three readings, but definitely like to have two readings would be completely, you know, from our standpoint, we, we would like to try to get it out there as early as possible so that everyone can look at those changes and have the opportunity to have some discussion on it. If that means, you know, have it on two separate meetings, that's, that's fine from our end, and I think it's better for the city.
Okay. So talking about the 2019 appropriations, there's, and I want to get your expertise on this. There's a fund, okay, so there's three funds that have money that was donated specifically for, like, capital improvements or improvements at specific parks. Like, we've got Fund Twenty-Nine, the Water Works Fund, there was, at the beginning of the year, there was fourteen-thousand-nine-eighty in there. There is Fund, I think, Four, is that, CWP, is that what that is?
Cypress Way Nature Preserve.
Cypress Way Nature Preserve.
Because it's Linder Park.
Gotcha. So that one, at the beginning of the year, had twenty-four-thousand dollars in it. But there was a, there's been disbursements in it, and between the disbursements and encumbrances, there's now only twelve-thousand-four-hundred dollars left in it. And so the concern is that, you know, I, I would like to see us appropriate very, I would not, normally in these funds, we appropriate the full, like, just the full amount of whatever the cash balance is, plus the expected revenue for the year. For some of these capital funds, I know specifically the Water Works Fund, there was, or the, yeah, Water Works Park Fund, there was a electrical box that went out at one of the, I guess, baseball fields down there that have lights. And the, or maybe it was for the scoreboard, I'm not exactly sure, but they, basically the electrical box went out. So there's a four-thousand-dollar expense, because they basically had to redo the electric in part of that. And to me, that was, that's an expense that should be coming out of the general fund, because it's just a, it's a general kind of maintenance expense. Whereas some of these other funds really, I think that the lenders, especially for that fund, when they put that money in there, like, I think they were probably expecting it to be used more for, I might be wrong about this, but more for capital improvements and upgrades and stuff, not necessarily kind of fixing something that, that broke. But I might be wrong about that. But that's how I would kind of see it. So I would like us to look at not appropriating the full amounts in some of those funds. So I think it's, yeah, it's Fund Four, Fund Twenty-Nine, and there's one more.
There's the Linder Park Flower Fund, which is twenty-two.
Yeah.
There's the Water Works Park Twenty-Nine, and there's Fund Seventy-Eight, which is the Robert McCullough G-Fund, RMGF. But that's also, I believe, we'll have to look at that. I think that's also for Linder Park, because that's the McCullough House.
Sure. Yeah, and I just want to make sure that we, I'd like council to, if we're going to have big expenditures out of there, I'd like the administration to ask us to change appropriations then in the future and do it. I'd rather us not have it automatic, just because I want to make sure that we're saving those funds for everything that they need to have. And if we do have expenses that are, like that electric box that went out, I mean, we've got to find the money out of the general fund, in my opinion, to get that fixed. So we're saving any of those specific parks money for good, like, actual projects that are going to improve the parks over just... So, because we'll, because, I mean, we would be forced to get that done. So like, if the administration came to us and said, we've got to find it, well, we'll work with the financial supervisors and figure out where those funds are going to come from, like we had to do when we did the fire audit and the police audit. So I'd like to take a similar approach when we're, and I'll work with the agenda to try to figure out what that is, but a similar approach to that for these appropriations, just to make sure.
What I would suggest is, once we close out October, and we know what the cash balances are and projections for year-end on these funds, I could create a sample list, add them to this spreadsheet that I gave you, and then the ones that you want to decrease, just do that at that time. Now, always understand, and I know that there was questions at the beginning of this year, that when we make the appropriations at the beginning of the year, and then the certificate of estimated resources is created at the end of January, which is the limit that we can appropriate, there may be some funds that are over... There may be some funds that are over appropriated and we have to pass an ordinance in February that decreases the appropriations in certain funds. And that's pretty typical because what we're doing is we're saying, this is how much cash we have in the beginning of November in a fund. So we're going to appropriate that much cash for the beginning of January to be utilized. But maybe something has been expended in, even though we've closed off POs, there might be an emergency and something is expended in November or December. And then we end up with less money at the beginning of the year, so we'll have to decrease our appropriations. And all it means is our estimates we're making on November 1st were a little higher than what they actually are on January 31st. So changes are going to be made. Typically, it happens in two or three funds, and it's not a lot at that time.
Excellent. And then for the 2018 appropriations that still need to be changed, can you give us like a read-off of what your expected changes are on that? Or do you, do you want to wait and have us just meet again at some point?
I think we should meet again on that because there's going to be a lot of kind of small things, but to give you a general overview of what needs to be changed, there were some keys from the standpoint of, the big ones are going to be outside legal fees because they're over what was projected. Now, legal fees fall under a special part of the law, meaning that you can incur them without having appropriations or a PO first, right? Because it just, I guess because lawyers write the law, I don't know. But you're allowed to do that. So we'll need to increase the outside legal fees keys. Settlement of claims also will need to be increased. The, or the property tax will need to be increased. There's another key that is like a worker's comp key that deals with legal cases dealing with workers' comp that because there was, because there's some hearings, those get credited, that'll have to be increased. The other ones that really desperately need to be adjusted are the keys that we make estimates on dealing with property tax. And when the actual amounts come in, they have to be adjusted to meet what the actual revenues were. So this has to do with our TIFs. And TIFs generate money, tax incremental funds generate money from property tax. So you say, we think we're getting a million dollars in and we appropriate a million dollars and we get $950,000 in. And $950,000 is paid out because they tend to be wash-through accounts. We need to decrease that appropriation by $50,000. Similarly, when we get our property tax bill from the county, it includes fees that they bill in, election expenses, county fee, county auditor fees, county treasurer fees, DRETAC, which is the advertising process that they use on the county level to go after people who owe back taxes. So there's a number of keys like these where we estimate about how much they're going to be, but we don't know how much they're going to be until we get the bill from the county, which is on the county settlement sheet. And so when I say bill, it just means they've decreased the amount of property tax we get by that amount. And so we have to now go in and note, now that we know after the September or the late August, finally, the final second half of the property tax comes in, we now know exactly what that amount is for the year, and so we adjust all of those to equal that amount. Now, a lot of those go down, some go up, but as those things go up and down, we start to notice that there's a little extra room in the appropriations because if we're decreasing keys in some area, then we can look at the ones that need to be increased. What's on the list of things that are the appropriations that are the requests that have insufficient appropriations? What on this do we want to go ahead and pay for? What are the needs of the city that can be met? So we look at those areas and increase them. Similarly, we look at payroll keys. We take the existing payroll for the existing staff that's here. We project that out for the last few payrolls of the year. We add it to the current balance that's been paid and we see who's over budget and who's under budget. And then the people that are under budget, we bring the appropriations down, their budget down to what we expect them to actually pay now that we know that we've got 10 12ths of the year behind us. And those that look like they're over budget, we increase up to be able to pay them. And that adjustment is something that typically happens every year. You make estimates for payroll, you make estimates for expenditures, and you adjust those estimates when you start to see the real amounts that are coming in. So you'll see a lot of things that change a little bit. You'll see a few things that change a lot. Most of these are pretty straightforward as far as all of the funds. If a fund brought in more money than what we projected, we're going to, we're going to increase that appropriation. So there'll be a spreadsheet that has that on it that looks very similar to what you have here. And there should be little explanations next to each thing. So I'll be creating that the next two weeks and then we'll send that off to the state and the state will approve the changes, hopefully, and then send it back to us and hopefully we'll get it on the agenda for the second meeting in November.
That's a lot of information.
Yeah, it's, it's all in my head.
I appreciate that. I appreciate the fact that you do that, so.
Yeah, it's really not as hard as it sounds. I mean, you just have to kind of put the whole budget there and look at what's been spent out of each key and what's expected and do some basic projections based on our current personnel levels or hirings that we expect and kind of break it down. And then I send it all off to the state and they either, you know, they kind of grade it and then send it back to me and maybe there's changes to be made and maybe not, then hopefully we pass it.
Thank you.
Great. Andrew or John, do you have anything else that you all want to make sure we covered today?
We, we went over a lot of information and I think the questions are many. They'll come up over the few weeks, next few weeks, but I appreciate you guys' hard work. Jim, you do a great job. Thanks.
Thank you.
Excellent. Do you have anything else?
Figured that was enough.
Yeah, I think that's how they please, don't have anything.
It kind of, it kind of tells us what we're going the next two months. That's kind of the plan, you know?
So I kind of wanted to just really quick, just talk about kind of public input and opportunities that, you know, Ms. Stevenson, the Chair of the Community Engagement Committee has, and I have been kind of talking about. So for the actual appropriations for 2019, appropriations, they have to match for the general fund and any fund that's governed by, or supervised by the Financial Supervision, Financial Recovery Supervision Commission. Any of those funds have to match the appropriations. So pretty much, we're not going to have a lot of control over what these appropriations are going to look at on January 1st. So, I mean, it's, there's not, I mean, public should definitely come to council to talk about if they have things, but there's not going to be a lot of opportunity to adjust keys or, you know, fund this priority, fund that priority. However, you know, when we adjust the fiscal recovery plan, there's going to be a lot more opportunities. So Leslie and I have been kind of working together. We're going to figure out what that kind of engagement looks like. So we've got some ideas of how we can ensure the public's, you know, properly, I guess, informed of what's going on, ensure, work on trying to get their input to make sure that that kind of forms some of the things that need to be done. You know, there's a million things at the city that need to be done and really we need to document as many of them as possible just to make sure that we get these needs in this five-year plan. I think this, this revision of the financial recovery plan that we're going to do, this next one, I think is, it's got to set the tone and it's got to have everything in it that the city needs, like, and, you know, things that could be a few pluses too, but definitely the needs like an HR director, you know, having a, potentially even a budget director that can literally manage the budget and see these expenses and review POs very indepthly and make sure that we're, you know, with copy contracts. We did get that fixed this year, but for years, we've had, every different department has their own copy contract. And so when we brought them all together, we were able to save 500 bucks a month, you know, on it and get extra upgrades as well that we didn't have with the previous contract. So there's just, there's those kind of needs. There's a lot of other things, the stairs at Milcrest Park, we've got just parks in general that we need to have, you know, but money in the budget for, for capital projects. At the Water Works Park, I don't know if you all went to the pool this year, but there's not enough chairs for people to sit on at Water Works and the locker rooms could definitely use some help. There's so much that needs to be done. And not to mention the streets, you know, we all know and hear about the streets and, you know, part of the streets issue, we've got money in the streets on, that we're going to start using next year. Part of the issue is that we've got to get the engineering work done on some of the, on some streets to be able to even bid them out. So we're working on that. But we've just got to make sure that this financial recovery plan that we do, this next version of it, I mean, has everything in it that we're going to need, including, you know, the fire department needs a ladder truck. I mean, that's going to be a million dollar expense that's going to be very painful. And so it's stuff that, that's one thing, it has to be in there. The police department needs cruisers and, you know, we can talk, you know, I, I hear all the time about the, the uncertainty of the financial, the future of the city is, you know, a reason for some people to leave, but it's been told to me as well that it's the equipment that these offices are using. I mean, we've got, you know, leftover cruisers from Westchester that the two newest ones that we, well, I don't say newest, but the two newest to us ones that we have are from Westchester. They each had 60,000 miles on it, which is, it was too many miles for Westchester, but for Norway, that's all that we could afford at the time. So we've just got to make sure all this stuff's in there. We've got to make sure that we're very, you know, we, we hold firm on, you know, the progress that's been made with staffing, with the police and fire departments. We've got to make sure that we keep at least our spending levels is, you know, to the point that, to where they are now or lower. So we'll be talking all about that and just kind of what goes on there, but it's, it's time for the city, you know, we've got to act like a city at this point. And I think for years, it's just, what can we cut, cut, cut? Well, you know, I've been proud of this council so far for fighting back and we have in the, when it comes to trying to save money and by the general fund being at where it's at, just to be slightly positive at the end of the year, I think it shows the progress that's kind of been made on that. But we've got so much more to do because we, there's not enough people to cut grass. There's not enough equipment to cut grass. I mean, there's, just the list will go on. And so, you know, we'll just be thinking about that. So I really want you all to think about that as well and just make sure that we're making, you know, making lists of things that need to be done. Citizens are complaining about stuff. I mean, literally create a list on your refrigerator at home and just start writing it down because we need to compile all of this and make sure that we get enough funding out there to do it. And I think part of it too is that we, we have one administration official, you know, the, we've got the mayor and then we've got the safety service director. And I think that for one person to do as much work as he's doing, I think we've got to look at that as well and split that job up and have a service director and a safety director. And, you know, knowing our current safety service director, I think that his, his preference will definitely be to be on the service side, not on the safety side. But if we split that up, but I think we have to. It has nothing to do with what Joe, you know, his job performance, but it has all the more to do that he can't do everything, so. And he's been expected to do everything for a long time, so we've got to work on that. So, yeah, anyways, I'm excited about the plan. I'm excited about the public engagement. And part of that engagement process too, when we look at the Quality of Life Plan and the work that the Quality of Life sub-teams have been doing, they've been down at the high school cafeteria every other week for the past six, well, I guess 12 weeks it, it's been, six sessions. They've come up with some overarching goals for the city. And so they, you know, looking at that and trying to ensure that we kind of fit some of our budget items into those goals, that we're meeting some of those goals, I think it's going to be pretty, it's going to be very helpful for us as well, just to make, just see how, you know, what citizens are perceiving are issues and how we're trying to fix those. So how we're trying to make sure they're in there. But, and then the last thing is that we have raises. I mean, we've got city employees since 2008, the Finance Committee 2008 or Council 2008 froze the pay for all non-union employees, essentially the appointed officials. And since then, you know, the police and fire departments through their union negotiations have consistently had raises. But since 2008, we've had no raises for the appointed officials. And so I think that we have, like in the plan, we have, that has to change. We have to start moving the other direction on that and make sure that, again, we're planning for the future of the city.
I think we have to be careful about the word raises. We should say pay increases. Because that's defined by a lot of people who will say, somebody didn't get a raise, but their pay did go up because they had an increase, so.
Oh, I guess, yes. So there are, yeah, pay increases. And so there's been no pay increases for some of these positions. So it's going to be harder and harder to find good people to fill these positions if we don't at least keep up with inflation at the very least. So it's just all things that have, have to get worked on, all things that we have, you know, as a city cannot freeze pay for the next 30 years. I mean, we have to start planning that there's going to be pay increases for the appointed officials, especially because the way the contract, the union contracts work, there's always increases there. So anyways, there's a lot of just things that we've got to work on that will be included in that. So we'll continue that discussion in future Finance Committee meetings and, you know, I'm sure the committee of the holes and future council meetings as well, where we talk about it with everybody else. But I'm excited for the future of it because I think that, you know, we're only guaranteed another, I guess, year and a couple of months here, but this plan we can set forward, we're going to help set the city on a path of progress, you know, for the next 10 years. And so I'm excited about that. I know that, I'm sure you all are going to be excited about that too, once we get digging in and seeing that, hey, look, we can, you know, we can and should fund this, or we can and should fund that, all these things that we've had to tell citizens that, oh my gosh, no, we have no money, we have no money to do it, we can't do it. But there've been needs at the city. I mean, you know, I just keep going back to the stairs at Milcrest Park and I don't know if you all have walked them yet, but it's, I mean, literally, it's about to collapse. I mean, they're, they are, they, to me, they are very unsafe. And so getting things like that, getting those rebuilt, getting streets done, it's going to be exciting once we can get it in our plan, so it'll just be stuff to work on. But yeah, so we are, I guess if there's nothing else, I guess we'll go ahead and conclude the meeting, but we'll work on scheduling our next meeting, probably going to be the end of November, so appreciate y'all being here.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yep.